Good evening. This Thursday, September 12th, 2024. Special meeting of the Board of Education is called to order at 5:31. First item on the agenda is 155.25, Pledge Allegiance to the Flag. Have everybody rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item on the agenda is 156.25, which is roll call attendance. Dr. Weaver's gonna take role.
Ms. Abney Mitchell.
Present.
Ms. May.
Present.
Weaver is here. Mr. Gray.
Dr. Weaver is not here. Oh, here we are, Dr. Weaver. Yes, I'm here, present.
A quorum does exist.
Next item on, it's been a long day. The next item on the agenda is 157.25, Citizens Comments. I didn't see anybody turning forms. Was there anybody wishing to make comment about agenda items? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the committee review and discussion, 158.25. First item is Ms. Polakovic.
Hello, hello. I just have some information for you for approval. We partnered with Wayne Risa to be part of the Stronger Connections Grant. And if you kind of read through it, it talks about what the purpose of this grant is. So as being part of the consortium member of this grant, we were specifically written into the grant and given a certain amount of money for each of the items that are found in that letter, that grant letter from Wayne Risa. So this is a reimbursable grant, so that's why I'm coming to you, because we will have to purchase and go through the procurement items for most of these services ourselves and then submit for reimbursement through Wayne Risa. So some of these we've already have in place, such as CareSalus. It will be a continuation. Wayne Risa is paying for CareSalus through February of '25. This will get us through the following school year. And then a couple other items, such as Munetrix and Attendance Works, to really look at our attendance, get a committee together, looking at behavior plans. So really just focusing on getting our students to school, using data to find different ways and patterns so that we can help with our community. And then there's a couple other smaller things that were our professional development related for the team of folks that are going to be a part of this, and then some oversight with Wayne Risa. You'll also see at the bottom that we do have an equitable share portion that some of the buildings or schools in our district, private schools, chose to be part of that. So you'll see their names on there as well, because they flow through our district and we will pay for that for them. Any questions?
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Dr. Weaver, then Ms. May.
These, these funds, what funds are they coming out of?
They are a state grant. I don't know the exact one, because like I said, I didn't apply for them myself, but Wayne Risa did, but they're, they were state grant.
You might be misunderstanding my question. When, when we pay this back, or when we pay out, what fund does it come out of?
Do you want to answer that?
All the checks are written out of general fund. And then we transfer from fund to fund. So this one would be front loaded by general fund and then we draw the funds back.
Okay, so also, I'm assuming that when those monies come back to us, they go back into general fund?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. May?
Yes, thank you. So my question was just, we, last year, we had Cognia. Is that who we were doing the attendance?
Concentric.
Concentra, okay, that's what I could not remember. So then, but that was a, so that contract is up now?
Yep, yep, we, we did not, and I don't know if, Jenny, if you want to speak a little bit to that, but we did not continue that contract. It was, it was expensive for that, so we had talked about doing some different things internally. May revisit that, but hopefully this will give us some data and some things that we can do internally. But no, we no longer have a Concentra.
Now, did we collect data with the Concentra? Okay, so is that something that will come to us at some point? Just so we understand why we are moving away from that into this? And I understand if this is something that Risa's paying for, but then I also would like to know, because we made that investment.
Yep, yep. We could even invite Mr. Bussek to come. He worked closely with Concentric and it came down to the costs and even breaking it down even per student, which is not cost effective to sustain, especially because if we have people in the district doing similar work or even looking at possible other grants to do that work through. So it was very good work, but we could, for the best part, get, reach out to more students, right? And then still have that same funding and resources for it.
Okay, thank you.
And I, even, even if we choose to continue on with some of these items that are in here, like Munetrix and Attendance Works, it was still less than we paid for Concentric altogether.
So then are we, I'm sorry, can I ask a follow-up?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so then, I don't see Munetrix, Munetrix listed on the front side of this memo, but that is something that we're going, oh, yes, I did, never mind. Missed it.
I think I listed just the ones that were over that threshold, but gave, wanted you to see that there was more in that, but for the threshold, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Ms. Abney Mitchell, did you?
Yes, my question is, you said that the funding goes through the '25 school year?
Yes, '25, '26.
Because on the paper, it say ending date '26.
For the '25, '26 school year. So we have CareSalus right now through February of '25. This grant will then pay for it through that following school year. If not, we would have had to pick up the remainder of it, but this grant will then pay for it for that following school year.
Oh, so right now, we paying for it through a different fund?
Previous, well, previous, we, we initially started paying for it out of our 31A funds. Wayne Risa is paying for it. We chose to opt in for Wayne Risa to pay for that CareSalus for right now. And then this grant will pay for it for the following school year. And then we, it would most likely, unless this grant continues, go back to 31A.
So right now, this date, where is the money coming from? Is it coming from 31A or the Wayne Risa grant?
Wayne Risa for, for right now.
For right now?
Yep, last school, the previous to, before Wayne Risa started paying for it, we paid for it out of 31A.
Okay, and so my other question is, I don't, the budget overview down at the bottom of the paper? When it lists this, what do it say, St. Michael Lutheran? I don't understand what that is.
So St. Matthew, St. Michael, and Hope Christian are all in, all schools, private schools that are within our district.
Okay.
And so we have to offer them an equitable share. So the same thing with our Title I, Title II, and Title IV budgets. They, because they have students and they're within our boundaries, so this name would apply to this grant. So Wayne Risa reached out to them and that's their equitable share.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that, I remember now from the tutoring, okay. Okay, I think that's, that's all I have.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Next, we have salt truck purchase. Mr. Togo.
Good evening, Board. My name is Gina Montane, Building and Grounds Department. Today, I'm bringing forth some information for review and approval for the Buildings and Grounds Department's purchase. Move forward with the purchase of a brand new salt truck that we need to currently replace the 2007 salt truck that we have right now that is nearing end of life. This is one of the most essential pieces of my equipment with keeping all 21, 20 of our facilities open and salt free during the winter. Right now, it's nearing its end of life. I worry of failure. It's, it's not an option. So this is something that I've had in my budget that I submitted back in March for, to Ms. Campbell at the time. I have it in my budget. First page you're looking at is from Bill Brown Ford versus the quotation for the new piece of equipment, $115,000. I'm hoping that with your approval, we can get this ordered up. It's about a four-week lead time. Once we order this up and it arrives at our site, I would like then to take our 2,000 piece of equipment and put it up for auction like we have with all of our last pieces of equipment. The money that we received from the auction will go back in the general fund to offset some of the overall cost from this piece of equipment. It's one of the pages that you've got, I believe, was page three or four, which was the information from the mine deal, which is a consortium to make sure that we are within full compliance of, we're getting the lowest deal across the state we should get as well. And I, there's a lot of other stuff that's in there as well, which is, I know everyone likes a lot of information. This is all the details, the trucks, the trim, the windows, it's got everything. So I tried to give you as much as you need, if not more. Is there anything I can ask that I have not already provided today?
Dr. Weaver?
I looked on the internet, which could be a dangerous thing sometimes.
Hundred percent. That WebMD tells me I'm dying every day.
And I'm seeing these Ford 650s for starting at $69,000. Why is this so expensive?
This is what the salt truck, as the spreader on the back, if you look, I believe, on the top part of, one of the pages from Bill Brown, the first quote from Bill Brown would be, the actual price was like $65,000, was our start price. And then we also received a piggyback loan or deduction as well from our deal. So it's by the time you add the salt bed truck, or salt bed part of it, Fred, the spreader that goes on the back, the lights, the backup kit, all the emergency lights we need for a salt truck, that's why the price goes from 65 to the 115. It's all the extras that go on with it. So it's not just the general truck purchase.
What are the total financed aftermarkets?
I can't.
That's $14,000.
I don't know, I can't, I don't have that in front of me right now. Afterma, oh, that's, that's some of the extras that go with it. I believe it's part of the salt, the salt spreader itself is the $14,000.
Okay, so you're saying to me, how many, how many dealerships were?
I'm just going through, Bill Brown Ford is the one that purchased the vehicle from. The salt truck, the bed itself, the aluminum portion comes from a separate, separate dealer, which is the other company that you see there for the 24,000 that's wrapped into the total cost.
Okay, I'm, I'm just trying to be clear, because before you get to anything else, this truck is 103, almost 104,000 dollars.
With the salt bed and salt truck and all the, with everything.
Salt bed you're talking about, it's a dump truck?
The dump truck that supports all the salt, yes, sir. I'm sorry, I missed it. I should have spoke that earlier.
That answers my question, thank you.
Anyone else?
I just had a follow-up question. I just want to know, do we only have one truck?
We currently have two salt trucks. When we hit, sometimes at 3:00, 4:00 in the morning when we go salt, they divide evenly and they take about 10 facilities each. We started the transportation building first to get the buses out, and then we go 10, 10 per building or per truck.
So you said one truck was?
One truck is near end of life. That's the one I'm replacing, the 2007.
What year is the other truck?
2016. I think we still got till 2033 before we even had to worry about something like that.
Thank you, I just wanted to know, okay.
All right, thank you.
My car has 159,000 miles on it, so what would you say about it?
But it's not hauling salt, Fred, like ours is.
Yes, my question is, man, you're afraid of me, forget it. My question is, what else is the truck used for when it's off-season?
We do take the salt, we take the salt spreader off the back. It was for moving dirt, asphalt around the district to repair different things, so it's multi-purpose.
So it's off-season truck?
Yes, it is.
It's actually a dump truck that they made into a salt truck.
During the winter time, yep, we have the attachments all under the back afterwards, during the winter, prepared for salt every year. But we use it all year round, for friends.
That's where you get the mileage at.
Hundred percent, yeah, we haul a lot of trees, a lot of downed trees lately.
I just wanted to ask one more thing. It has a shovel on the front?
It, it does not. It's just a strictly ASAL truck. We have plow trucks for our district, would have already brought those to you the last few years for doing the, we have small F250s that do all the salting, or that do all the plowing, Fred.
All right, thank you, okay.
Mr. Gray?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we have technology with Ms. Mar and Dr. Beebe.
Good evening, Board. How are you?
Good evening.
So we have a lot of items and I'm happy to be here with Mr. Beebe to get all this information to you so that you can make the decisions that you have to make. So item 3A, E-Rate, this is informational based on probably last October, Ms. May, when the board requested that all potential bids come in front of you before they go out for RFP. So essentially, we have about 760, actually, this is exact, 763,319 dollars available to us for E-Rate. As I shared with you last year, E-Rate requires us to do a 15% match. We can do that either from general fund, bond dollars if you had them, or sinking fund. I did check to make sure that the language in our sinking fund proposal actually included technology. It did. So by the end of this month, you, Wayne Westland has to file their 470, which will include what they're gonna take in the RFP. We're gonna go for cabling internal in our buildings and essentially starting with the secondaries, the high school and the middle schools, because of the age of that equipment. And we'll be able to get approximately a million dollars worth of technology for about 150,000 dollars. What questions might you have? Ms. May? Oh, sorry.
So does this, so I know you mentioned last October and I know we talked about the wireless access point. So this is separate from that?
Yes, so in, so last year, we had about 1.7 million. I don't have that exact number in front of me, 1.7 in category 2 E-Rate funding. We spent a little over half of it last year, knowing that we were trying to navigate and make, get some understanding about where we were fiscally. I thought it was a good, good opportunity for us to split it in half and do one project this, last year and one project this year. So the AP point project is almost a fruition, almost completion. They have a couple buildings left to install, but the access points are in. They are installed. They're gonna be rolling out certificates. And pretty soon, when you walk into a building, if you need to connect to Wi-Fi, you're no longer gonna need to know some secret passwords, because it's gonna authenticate. And almost like when you go to a hotel, you'll basically go to a website, put in your information, and it will allow you to attach to our guest Wi-Fi. I did actually do some speed tests a few weeks ago and our buildings are, the Wi-Fi is definitely stronger and it's exciting that our kids are gonna, especially at testing time, we're not gonna have to be as worried about the infrastructure not supporting our students.
So when you say cabling, what's the cabling?
So inside of our buildings, there is cabling. Basically, it connects from the outside. Internet basically comes into your building through a point. And then throughout your buildings, you have something called an IDF or an independent distribution frame. You might think of main, big, we have a MDF that's over at William D. Ford, but throughout the building, throughout the buildings, we have IDFs. We have between four to eight a building, depending. Wayne Memorial would have the most, because you can figure out the layout is kind of weird. So you, so you sort of have to connect those. And so that's the cabling that allows us to get to the access points, to connect that infrastructure so that they actually are getting the signal they need for all of, for, for all of, all of our classroom AV, for our access points, for our clocks, our door systems, all of those things to run. And if you do look in the, in the, some of the supportive documentation here, you can see that this project is actually, we had built out sort of a 10-year forecast. There's actually a page two to this, if you want to see it at some point. But we had built out and we actually have internal cabling as a project that needs to be done in fiscal year '25. So this is in line with that plan that was put together over the last year. Thank you. Yep.
Any other questions? Okay, move on to the next.
Okay, so items B, C, D, and E all kind of go together. So high level, last year when I did my road show, I went around and I visited all the buildings and I looked for what was our number one pain point. And our number one pain point in the district at that time was our one-to-one student device initiative. And we, then we triangulated that with data. We were looking at breakage rates, we were looking at loss. We were looking at a whole lot of different things. And in that, I worked with the CIA department, specifically Ms. Polakovic, Ms., Ms. Broll, and Ms. Grove to really talk about what we really need in a one-to-one initiative. We also were looking at sustainability, because we didn't really have an allocated funding source for that at, at the time, even though we were saying we were one-to-one. And Ms. May, we looked, really dug into to look at what grants might be available. So at that time, when we really started this work, all of the Esr funds had been encumbered elsewhere, but things have come in and it did, the final receipts have come in and they were able to really look and realize that some money actually was still available in Esr funds. So most of this is gonna be sponsored, paid for through both Esr funds and/or the GEAR, the governor, the, so Esr, the federal, or GEAR, the state version of our emergency relief funds. So the one-to-one initiative is going to pivot and it's gonna look this way. Those ECF iPads that we had several thousand of, we're actually going to, we actually recollected those back. They've been able to have them scrubbed and they are ready to deploy. We're gonna actually deploy those in kindergarten. They're smaller device, they're touchscreen. And they, and they, the kindergarten teachers really like that device and they think it's age appropriate, which I agree. One through five is gonna continue in the Chromebook, one-to-one in the classroom, so it won't look any different. The biggest change is actually going to come in middle school. We had one middle school this year whose breakage rates for Chromebooks were nearing 50%. And so we really wanted to get our heads around, how do we make sure those kids have devices in their classes and help keep our costs to a responsible space? So essentially, what's gonna happen is the kindergarten carts are going to, those carts are gonna move to the middle school, because we're going to need to buy iPad carts for that. And then those, those middle school carts will be, will be purchasing a few more middle school carts. And so then all the core content classes at the middle school and the sixth grades will have a cart assigned to them. And then there'll be additional carts for checkout for those elective classes, you know, like the gyms, the arts, the musics, that may not need a cart every day. They'll have a bank of those in their media centers for checkout. High school's gonna stay exactly the same. It's gonna stay in the one-to-one initiative. So I said all that so that I can hit into number, letter B, iPad carts for elementary. So essentially, these 30 iPad carts will be placed in our elementary classrooms. The devices that we already have will be put in them. They come fully cabled. These carts are actually really nice, because not only do they hold the devices, they're actually in baskets. So you think about a kindergarten classroom where they have little tables. These actually, the table representative can go over and the teacher can give them their basket and carry it to their table. I was a kindergarten teacher. I actually really liked this model. So they will have them to use in their classrooms and then they will go back. So we're asking to purchase 30 iPad carts at $86,998.50, and this is coming from the, the state, the GEAR 2 funds. Any questions?
So I, so I do have a question, but you may not have the answer for this question. So I looked through the technology plan. Thank you for that, to let us know, like, the big picture, right? And what the plans are. And this probably wouldn't come from technology, but I'm assuming there would be some alignment in regards to, when we talk about one-to-one devices and having them in the classrooms, I have not heard how they are going to be used in the classroom outside of testing. And then I don't think I've heard anything around any type of professional learning for teachers, around integrating technology. So I am concerned with the amount of money that we're spending on technology and if we have teachers that know how to actually use the devices the way they want to, the way we would want them to use the devices, if that makes sense.
Okay, so last year, we really pivoted to the technology department being in service to the district. We actually use language in my department, like internal customers. And one of the things I really worked on with them and tried to model with that team is how we collaborate with especially central office and building leadership to meet the needs of their students. So the iPads are actually going to be imaged. Ms. Broll is actually working with her kindergarten teachers to identify the apps that they want to have deployed. They've actually had Apple in and done some training with them already. And so they are actually communicating to technology what needs to be on them for the instructional purposes that align with what's coming from CIA. And the technology team is actually in service to the, to the CIA department to make sure that they can, that they can use those devices. Also, in terms of internal professional development, because it doesn't always come from Apple, what, last year, we really worked on changing our instructional technology role over at the, over in the tech department, focusing her more on teacher learning, adult learning than direct service to students. And the STEM Center, Ms. Ms. Dickelman, she also has two carts of iPads there. So the things that she's demonstrating and modeling in terms of like STEM-based, project-based, place-based education, she's modeling those things in the To With and By model in the STEM Center.
Thank you. I'll just lift this, and this is just me lifting. We talk so much about students being on devices and how much time they spend on devices. And so when I think about integrating technology into a classroom, I'm thinking of it as a tool, not kids on apps, right, or on websites.
I agree with you. I'm sorry.
Just, I'm tired. Let me go back and try to remember my thought. But nonetheless, just students, that being used as a tool in a classroom and not a placeholder for students to sit and get on various websites or apps. So I would love to hear more about how that is the plan for these devices versus, you know, just that piece, so.
I agree.
And that's just my philosophy on the use of technology.
I agree with you. And one of the really nice things about the, both Chromebooks and iPads is the productivity suites on there, where we're really pushing children toward that creative space and the ability to present themselves in other ways. And a lot of that will just tie back to obviously that classroom instruction that I know Ms. Ms. Curry's team worked so hard on with those instructional coaches and all of the tool, all of the human resources that they have in place there, giving students a different way to demonstrate their, their mastery of the knowledge is, I think, whether it be on technology or not, is, is just sort of, it really models what's happening out there in the real world.
Dr. Weaver?
Yeah, I had a question, I think a follow-up to what Ms. May actually asked. And that is usage in the classroom. I walked by some classrooms, they were out, and walked by some classrooms and they were not out. So do we have any data that shows how many hours a day these are being used?
We can actually pull some data. We have a platform called Clever and you can actually pull use data off of Clever. They just actually rolled out some new tools inside of that module. And so I would really recommend the CIA department spend some time with Ms., what is Rebecca's last name? Ms. Keeling, sorry, forgot names already. With Ms. Keeling to really drill in. Also, we have access to something called Learn Platform and Learn Platform can also give us information about how and when students are using those devices. And, and what, and what they are using on those devices.
Okay, so is it fair to say that some teachers may not use them at all?
I would say that that is highly unlikely, because all standardized testing is now virtual or digital.
Except for testing.
I would find it very hard to believe, because many of our resources are electronic, our curriculum, like Newsy LA, help me out, Ms. Curry. Newsy LA really comes to mind. The science curriculum is, all has a virtual component to it. And it, that, and that's even, that's the elementary. And it just gets more and more, like, all of our high school textbooks have an online component. So those students are actually referring to those devices, not just for apps, but for their actual informational tools that we, and resources that we have in those classrooms.
Thank you.
And Ms. Mar, I would just add to, right, teachers just within best practice, no, right, not having kids stare at a screen all day is not best practice. They have them up, they have them moving around, interacting with different materials and so forth. So it's truly a balance of both on the technology and off the technology.
Yeah, I, I don't think that we would have any case, other than perhaps a virtual student, where we would see a student sitting on a device all day long. That's just, even for a virtual student, I wouldn't say that that's healthy.
All right, I have two things. First, I, I
First, I do just want to bring everybody's attention to when Dr. Weaver asked that question, if there's any teachers that don't use them. All of the people in this room that are in the classroom, circle their head yes. So, it appears that they at least know of teachers that are not using them. So, not saying that you're the ones not using them. My second thing is that, you know, I, before I went to law school, a previous career of mine is actually used to do business-to-business sales for Apple. And Apple actually uses Brett Ford cards, they're great. My question though is, how old are the iPads we have? I know we bought some more recently.
Yeah, so these iPads that we have are two years old. So, we can probably keep them easily in our environment for another four years, I would say.
Okay.
Before they'll really start to show their age. Three years would probably be ideal. We, when we went through the listening sessions over at the William B. Ford Career Tech Center, sorry, I wasn't able to attend one of those, but I did get some feedback that people had asked what would happen if we sold them. We did get a quote on that. And it was ninety, we were able, we would be able to get ninety-five dollars a device back if we sold them back. However, we're not allowed to sell them for six months because of the rules around the ECF grant. So, we would just have to house them. And I personally don't have a preference on whether we stayed Chromebook K through twelve or did iPads there. But this was actually the, the elementary instruction, Ms. Broll worked with her team. And they, and the kindergarten teachers really, really feel that this is a better device for supporting their students. So, since we have them, I thought it would, why not spend some time exploring whether or not this is the right device before you, before you head into bond and have to purchase student technology?
And the only reason I bring that up is because I just want to bring attention to the fact that this Brett Ford cart, that carts we're buying are for iPads with lightning adapters, no current model iPad uses lightning adapters. They still sell old ones and, and through education, I know the ones they sell still use them. But the next time we refresh, they're not going to have lightning, lightning ports on them. So, we would either need to replace these carts then, or we would need to buy adapters for every one of the forty slots on each cart. So, that will be an additional expense next time.
Yep, so, and they're actually using like a company like K-12, K-12 Tech, or Greenwave, or another. There are companies that'll rewire an entire cart for you to.
Yeah, just want to make sure that there will be an added cost to this one-time company, we refresh those. But it seems if they're all within the last two years, we should be good for a little while.
We will be good, I would say it'll be good, especially because we have some and we'll have a few, we'll have a nice little repository of backup devices in case some get lost or broken. They will make it through until you are able to refresh during bond.
Ms. May, another question then, Ms. Abby Mitchell?
I do, I'm sorry, last, well, I'm not going to say last question, but it might be the last question. So, with this purchase, and if we're saying that these devices are heavily used in the classrooms, do we have a plan, like, because we won't have Esser money when it's time to refresh?
So, if, that, one of the reasons I included the budget, or proposed budget underneath item A, was that, was so that you could actually see what I provided to the bond committee as a draft of a budget. And I actually moved student devices into the bond. That's very common in a lot of districts, it hadn't been done here before. So, I actually am recommending that you, that they, that the committee, if there isn't available general fund money, consider using bond technol, bond monies to replace student devices.
And two thousand, two, and twenty-five, two thousand twenty-five?
Well, if you, so.
Or am I not looking at the right document?
I actually spaced it out because replacing an entire fleet of, we'll say twelve thousand devices at one time is challenging to a tech department of nine people. So, I actually spaced it out where it would be in twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine. Like, you'd probably need to be focused around spending seven fifty to a million a year.
So, the last statement I have is, I would just love to see the plan for, from curriculum, if that's who's responsible for ensuring the tech integration is taking place in the classrooms and some data around that. This is a lot of money. And we have teachers in the audience, and we've had teachers in previous audiences saying that the devices aren't being used in the way that I believe the plan is for them to be used, right? And so, I just really would like to see what that instructional piece of the use of the devices are. Not that she knows off the top of her head, I'm saying moving forward.
Any other questions about B?
Ms. Abby Mitchell?
Um, that, that actually was what I was going to talk about, the learning component of that and the data that we're not receiving. I did read something over the weekend in the Westland News showing that our MSEP scores is lower, almost thirty percent lower than area, school districts. So, you know, it's just like, we need to get that data and get a better understanding of that and moving forward how the technology will help. Like, how would the technology help the kindergartners? First, we got to get past them thinking that this is my toy that I have at home. And it's almost like that learning of the whole third grade, learning how to write in cursive. So, yeah, so just the learning component and the, and the data to back it up.
Yeah, I actually agree with you that Wayne Westland does need to probably look at those MSEP scores and really drill into what's happening. However, this isn't necessarily, that's not necessarily my role here tonight.
Okay.
So, I'm going to let that table.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Heinz? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, with these debts, how do we collect the debts, debts from the parents? Is it like, do they send a bill, like, what if they don't pay, how does that work?
Okay, so this is an actually interesting story. When I took over the department last year, one thing I really rapidly learned is that we were collecting fines and no one knew where the fines were going. So, and part of that was, is that a lot of fines wouldn't actually be collected until the end of high school, when a student was about to graduate. So, even if they had incurred a technology fine in elementary or middle school, it just sort of hung out there. But the ones that were collected were oddly, at that point, channeling to jump, back to the general fund. And then at the end of the year, were being recaptured and put into general fund. So, they weren't actually trickling to accounts that would play for device loss or device repair. So, I worked last year with the business office, they rolled out a new platform called RevTrack. I worked with them to create a sixty-two, that's an internal budget line for all the buildings. And now, and I, it's not in this packet, but I did share it with the leadership team last week. And, well, actually, I shared it a while ago, but I shared it again with the leadership team last week. A proposed scale on how much we should charge for each of the, each types of breakage or loss in alignment with this, I didn't expect this whole Wayne Risa RFP to be printed, but it was. It's in alignment with what it would cost us to repair a device if we were to send it out, just so that we can, we have a little backup and we can be in alignment with market on that. But essentially, RevTrack would allow when a student is issued a fine, the link to be shared to the parent, the parent or student, depending on the family dynamics there, can pay the, pay the fine right online. And then it comes back. And one thing I had started to work on with Ms. Stone, thanks for coming tonight, is that they, is that we would look at that quarterly and we would sort of evaluate what we needed to purchase to support that building in their, in their one-to-one initiative.
That's cool. Would the money be like with that special line item? Would like the money be in the pool and you can use that money in the pool to purchase new, from the fines and stuff?
So, that fine, an internal account line, and Ms. Claire, you can speak a little more about this if I get it wrong. But an internal account line allows, essentially, you identify what that is, what the purpose of that is. So, this, in this case, it's equipment repair for technology. And so, I would have to spend it, or Wayne Westland would have to spend that line on what we said it would have to be. And also, because it's an internal account line, typically, you want to get that back as close to zero at the end of the year because it's supposed to be spent in the year that it is collected.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions?
I have one.
Ms. Abby Mitchell?
So, as far as recovering technology that's out there from a student that's not in the district no more, or a student that graduated, need to get their high school diploma, or a student that's still in the district and it's a new school year. Do we offer any waivers to the families that cannot afford to pay that fee?
That would have to be a decision that the Wayne Westland leadership will want to make. I would definitely say that what's happening in best practice, a lot of districts are looking at their free reduced lunch counts, although I realize that lunch is being offered free everywhere right now. But they're looking at, it is actually, some districts are actually even using things like this, like reduce fine costs as a, what is it called? Like a little bit of cheese to get you, get families to actually fill out their, out some of those forms that are needed.
Right, right, yeah. Or even having a student work some hours off or something like that. Because we taking so much away from them, even at the football games, the ones that used to collect the money and stuff. Now, they do everything electronic. So, we taking stuff away from, learning components away from the students. But that's another story, I'm done.
I just, to a follow-up to what I was asking, because we're supposed to vote on these purchases at the next board meeting. So, I would like to see the correlation with curriculum and the purchase of these devices. Thank you.
Okay, item C, this is just a continuation of that one-to-one. Item C is exact, is asking to purchase twenty Chromebook carts for middle school. That will make sure that we have enough carts to provide the carts to the, to all the sixth grades and the core classes in tho, in those buildings. We're purchasing ten of these carts from GEAR and ten of these carts from Esser. And we're allocating thirty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars to that purchase.
I just want to clarify, so those are Chromebook carts?
Those would be Chromebook carts.
So, that's a correction to the agenda, it says iPad carts for C. That's why, didn't see, I didn't see a second iPad quote in there, so I thought something.
Oh, actually, I'm, you're right, it actually, I skipped one.
Okay, so it's D one.
Do we want to talk about D since I just presented it?
Sure.
And then we'll go back to C, okay. Any questions about the Chromebook carts? And these actually do have the new.
Everything, USB-C.
Universal, thank you Europe for pushing everybody to universal chargers, although Apple may not like that. But these actually do have the new universal chargers. Okay, we're going to go back to item C, iPad carts, middle school. So, in looking at our fleet from those ECF devices that we brought back in last year, we, middle school has indicated, especially in, we don't call it design tech, but in, we have a, an elective here that's basically like an elementary or a middle school design tech and a few other that are in that STEM-oriented space. And they, middle school has indicated, because they've been working with Ms. Dickelman that, at the STEM Center, that they would like to bring some of the resources that they're learning there into the middle school space. So, this is, item C is asking to purchase nine iPad carts. These will be housed in the media center and used for, by checkout. They will be mirrored to match what's on the iPads at the STEM Center. And to support their project-based learning initiative that they started this summer, where many of our middle school teachers have the opportunity to go to the, at no cost to Wayne Westland District, to go to Texas for almost a week to learn around rovers and all of this other exciting things. So, this is, the total budget amount for this is twenty-six thousand ninety-nine dollars and fifty-five cents, and this will come from Esser.
Any questions about that? Wait. All right, item E.
Okay, I'll try not to skip this time. E. Okay, item E, student devices. So, this is asking to purchase thirty-five thousand seventy-four Chromebooks. These Chromebooks come with the Google license. They also, these ones are actually coming with zero-touch service. So, they will actually, right out of box, be able to open and work for our students rather than have the time or it requires to set that up. And I'll, the reason that we chose to do that is because you'll see on item G, staff devices, those are going to take a little more time to set up and since it is a small team, this way, they'll be able to allow, allowed to focus on that staff device. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a few minutes. Why thirty-five thousand seventy-four? This would be potentially enough Chromebooks to keep your fleet stable until you get to the opportunity to use bond monies. This essentially will provide enough Chromebooks for the students to fill in the final gaps this year, to be enough in the, in the backup to replace anything that's lost and broken next year, that's planning to end of life. And it will get you over the hump into where you can do some long-range planning around this initiative.
Did you say, I'm sorry, did you say thirty-five thousand?
Thirty-five hundred seventy-four. I, thanks for the caption. I just got really excited.
Okay, we need to.
I'm planning for all of Wayne County, I guess. No, thirty-five hundred seventy-four. Because one of the things we did end up doing this year is we did end up depleting our, Wayne Westland ended up depleting its testing fleet. So, we don't even have a testing fleet in backup right now. So, this would allow for that to stabilize. And what's also nice is that since we're getting them in now, they'll be all set up, ready to go. And rather than principals coming back in August next year and being worried, do I have enough Chromebooks? And that's one more thing on their plate, principals are already going to know, these have been delivered in June or before. They're, they know that their tech is already there, their student, they don't have to worry about. They can actually determine how they want to, at the high school level, pass them out. Maybe they want to do it at an open house, like the second week of August or something. It gives a lot more flexibility to welcoming our students in, making sure they have the tools that they need. Also, as new staff come in, the principals can work and work with their staff on making sure that they have the student technology they need in their classrooms, because it will be in their buildings already.
Any questions?
I do. So, one question, do you know how many devices we've purchased this year total? Because I know we've purchased like from Title I and various, so do you know how many we purchased? Or do you have that?
Ballpark, we've purchased probably around three thousand, probably around three thousand.
Okay, so can we get that as a follow-up, the exact amount, along with how, the total amount of money we've spent on tech purchases this year?
Be about, right? Because that would be about a quarter of our fleet, which is, as I shared in the, in the bond, in the bond projections, would be about what you would want to replace a year. So, having about three thousand that we're replacing a year, three to four thousand a year, doesn't seem out of line based on the size of your fleet.
Thank you.
Ms. Abby Mitchell?
I just want to follow up with her question because, and also, when we get that information, can we get the expecting life of that device?
Yeah, so Chromebooks actually now can live, and Dr. Weaver and I've had this conversation, can live up to ten years. They won't. But Google has changed their rules. It used to be that you could only use a Chromebook for three years and it would end of life based on the way the software ran. It would no longer get updates. Google has changed that because they became really aware that their name was going to be attached to a whole lot of e-waste at the end of, because a lot of those COVID Chromebooks are starting, were hitting that three-year mark. So, they actually changed it to be ten years. I would say out of these Chromebooks, you're going to get four years of solid use. You could maybe stretch to five, but I wouldn't recommend it, that as being a stable device that you want to guarantee that testing and stuff could happen on. But I would, I feel that four years, you could, could, these devices will serve you in the future.
So, we should be expecting to probably purchase the three thousand a year?
I would, if.
That would be the recommendation?
I would, my recommendation would be that you would replace about a quarter of your fleet annually, yes.
And that's about three thousand?
It would be around three thousand devices, a little over, because you'll have, because it's, it's not quite one-to-one just because of having a testing fleet and with the middle school going to Chromebook carts, even though it's a little over one, one-to-one, it's actually going to reduce the rate of total Chromebooks needed in the environment because you don't have a breakage rate that's really pushing you more to like one point five devices per kid. So, you're actually, you're probably, in the middle school, it's probably close to like one point one, one point one-five, one point two devices per kid.
Ms. May? I don't know, I'm sorry, besides.
Is there like some type of insurance protection, if there's some type of weird like virus that shuts?
Um, is there like some type of insurance protection, if there's some type of weird like virus that shuts down all the computers and it tears them up, like some type of insurance that would replace them if something weird happens, like a cyber attack?
Okay, so Chromebooks, um, a lot, you don't typically have to worry about that so much for a variety reasons. One being that unless they are connected to your wifi and using apps, um, they um, they uh are essentially paperweights, they don't do much off, off of the environment. Um, but, and inside of that, all of the apps that our students are using are filtered through. Um, we control what, tho, those things, obviously they can go out to the web, the internet and get stuff. But um, there are so many tools that we have in place, um, like Fortigate, we talked about it a couple of board uh finance meetings ago, and um, a plethora of other things that we have in place that would prevent an attack from coming into our environment. Harmony, uh, Fortigate, um, I don't have that list with me right now, but, yeah.
Thank you.
Um, I just had one question, have we looked at all into um, like lease options for any of this?
Yeah, so I, I personally like the lease option, but Wayne Westland has traditionally done a purchase. Um, I don't like lease for Chromebooks though, because the price of a Chromebook right now, we, off of REMC, we can get them so inexpensively. It actually leases tend to be, actually cost more for a Chromebook fleet. But um, like in terms of like in the future planning for things around like perhaps staff devices or whatnot, um, a lot of times you could do a four-year lease for, I don't know, five hundred eighty dollars a device and then um, you know, return it. The thing about leasing that you have to be careful about is you have to have a really good plan in place for how you're getting those devices back, because in the, in the months, or the month and a half or two months where you still have the old devices and you have the new devices, you're paying the lease for both of those. So you have to have a really good plan in place for doing that. So a lot of school districts, um, for a variety of reasons, tend to purchase. Most, most likely they purchase because um, a lot of school districts are running, I call it run until fail, keep the device until it breaks and then buy a new one. That's not necessarily a great model, and it's one thing that, this all exists because I was trying to end that here. Um, but um, it, um, but leasing definitely is a model.
All right, any other questions? All right.
Okay. Okay. So the next thing in here is resale of broken technology equipment. So, sorry, December, um, our then superintendent moved um Chromebook repair from buildings and grounds to technology. I didn't quite know what that meant at the time, but with the one FTE that came, um, so did more than two thousand broken Chromebooks. Um, and a hand, and a large number of iPads. Um, and we have worked diligently to try to get in front of that this year, and it is an uphill battle. So at this point, because if we make this purchase, will it be able to stabilize our student fleet? I am recommending that um, uh, based on a bid that just came through from Wayne Resaw, that we partner with, um, a vendor partner with K-12 Tech and actually have them come in, package up our broken devices, take them, um, and then they will offer us, they will white glove it. They will actually give us our inventory list, so we can remove them from inventory. Um, and then they will actually give us either a credit or cash to use. Um, if we take the credit, what's really nice about that is the tech department would be able to stay in front of that broken device, those broken devices for a while, because they'd be able to spend that down while they stabilize through the change that's coming to them. Um, but, um, or we can just get cash back. Um, if we were to just dispose these and throw these in the recycle bin, we'd probably get about a dollar a device. Um, using the K-12 um buyback proposal, we're looking at, you know, anywhere from uh, three to twelve dollars a device for credit. Um, so it's a substantial uh increase in what we would get back from the model that they were using of just basically doing mass recycling.
Any questions? Ms. Anthony Mitchell?
Okay, so you say we getting three to five dollars for the buy. Are we paying them for anything? They coming in, they giving us our inventory list, they wiping it clean, what are we paying them for their services?
Oh, well, obviously they are going to get the resource, and then they're able to um part those out. They're able, so they can get money for, um, they can use replacement parts, they can get money for some of the metals that are in those. Um, they, they have a huge, um, obviously they're making money on this, right? But um, it's also saving us time and it's also um, creating an opportunity for us to get out from underneath the Chromebook, the broken Chromebook mess that um we are in.
Yes, absolutely, it's saving us manpower and things like that, but we not paying them anything.
No.
Okay.
Ms. May?
So am I not reading this, is this a different thing that talks about a two percent fee, administrative fee?
Well, they will take that.
Is that not?
They will take their fees off of what are total, um, what, when they say this is the total that you get, then they take a little bit off of it.
So then we are paying them something? That's, I just want to be clear, like that's, I'm not, okay.
Well, we're not.
So it's two percent of the total?
Of the total, so they able to do their entire buyback quote for us and then they, then they take from that. But in terms of us writing a check to them, no.
Understood. Thank you.
So I just want to clarify, who, so who's doing the repairs now?
So right now there is a position called Chromebook Repair Lead, um, and it is actually open um, right now. Um, it's been open twice in the Technology Department. Um, Dr. O'Phillie, is it okay for me to talk about that position?
Well, we're the board, so if we ask you, yes, it's okay.
I just don't want to misrepresent anything. So Chromebook repair in most districts, if you have Chromebook repair, is often done by um, maybe students on workplace learning, or um, it's a very low-level position. It's usually like a welcome to tech type position. Um, and here is, is, has been historically one person um, at the top of the boss pay scale. Um, so it's a very expensive position, um, a position that the tech department could use that um, the, the um, could actually attract a, a really high-performing employee and somebody interested in growing their career path into. However, this is, at this point, a dead-end position that's not going to allow somebody to grow. Um, and um, I would recommend that it be considered and looked at long-term.
And um, this is probably a question for one of you too, but have, we already have this discussion with boss?
Yeah, we're, we have to work through the UU before we can make any of those stuff, our description changes.
Okay, and the only reason I ask those is because if we're voting in two weeks on taking work that is currently being done by a boss position, even though it's an open position, don't we already have to go through that before we can make a decision to remove work responsibilities from one of their positions?
But even if you brought the position back as it is, um, you would want to bring him, bring it back where the person is not facing an uphill battle.
Oh, no, I, I understand that, I just want to make sure that we're not taking work from a bargaining unit.
That's a fair question.
You know, by voting yes on this.
That's something that would want to, before that proposal's lifted, we'd want to clear that with uh, the appropriate.
Any other questions?
So you will know that, and you'll bring that to us, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Just trying to avoid ULPs.
That's a fair question. Um, and Dr. O'Phillie and I had started that conversation um, more than a few months ago actually. Um, because um, I, I believe that the positions of lead inside of the tech department can be used um, to do things around like network and systems, um, those higher-level roles that, that many of your team actually does aspire to grow into. Um, and it would be a great way to show that um, Wayne Westland is a learning community that not only grows students, but grows staff. All right, G, staff devices. So um, this is a request to purchase two hundred ninety-two thousand two hundred sixty-six and two cents worth of staff devices. Our, most of our staff devices are at end of life. Um, and we need to be thinking long-term about how to replace that fleet, whether it be to buy or lease. But this will allow um, the tech department to have enough devices to get over the gap until you can get to a stable funding source, um, specifically bond. Um, that's when they were purchased last time. Um, that, there have been, um, some of the challenges to the department that, and I had shared before, was that there wasn't an inventory system that was correctly tracking a lot of devices. And since um, the board kindly voted yes on that, this is um, I think, a first step in really starting to bridge that, um, bridge the gap that we have right now in staff devices. Um, this will also allow um, a couple initiatives that have been started to really come to fruition. Um, the Technology Department had been collaborating with the Office of Human Resources to really change how an employee onboards here at Wayne Westland. Um, and as part of that, they are creating um, what is called the Technology Onboard. And so what that will look like in the future is um, a, an employee will clear their background check. They will get the Welcome to Wayne Westland official email. And in that email is um, they will actually have links where they can schedule a Technology Onboard. They will come over to the Technology Department at that time, and they will get their badge made by Ms. Stone. Um, and they will get their device assigned to them, all set up. Um, and, and as part of that onboard, they will, the Technology Department will sit with them and make sure that they can access every system that they're going to need for their specific role, whether it be MyStar, Smart, um, et cetera. So that when they do go off into um, their role, um, and maybe they're sitting with their executive director, um, it's not, I can't access this, it's just how do I use this? Um, additionally, if they are a teacher, um, a teacher role, um, one of our offices over there has a smart board, um, a, a docking cam, a few other devices. Um, so as they grow into this onboard, they'll also work with Ms. Keeling for about fifteen minutes to get a familiarity on how to use those classroom AV technologies.
Do you have any questions? No? Um, I just, I think many of us have been there where you start a new job and uh, it takes weeks to get access to everything and it's extremely frustrating, so I like that idea of somebody sitting with them and making sure they have access to everything they want.
Yep. Any other questions on staff devices? Okay. District Technology Uninterrupted Power Supplies. So basically in all of our buildings, um, we have, as I talked about earlier, independent district, um, independent frames where um, essentially all the cabling kind of heads out of into the building. Um, now those are electronic, and what, what happens when the power goes out, they fail, right? So, an uninterrupted power supply essentially allows us to, it almost intel like a generator would kick on, it makes sure that um, your, your, um, your independent frame doesn't go crash. Um, so this is asking um, for, to spend. Uh, this price is a little off, sorry. This was, I, I'll, I'll, I'll tell you why it's a different price than what it was in a second. I don't have the actual quote.
Yeah, we have.
We've got an updated. Oh, okay, so you got an updated sheet with the new price today, which actually lowered our accounts from eighty-eight to eighty-eight from one hundred. And the reason around that is, is because um, as Mr. DeVal, the Director of IT Operations and I were talking, um, first of all, we didn't know we had this money till last Friday, so we were in a little bit of a crunch. Um, um, as we, as he and I were talking through this, we selected, we had first went to the REMC bid list because that's a, um, an appropriate way to do um, K-12 technology spending. Um, and we had looked and determined that we could purchase a hundred devices. But when he went to get the formal quote for this on Monday, um, in talking with, um, and Ms. Stone supporting him, um, we realized that REMC was allowing us to buy the newer technology. Um, and because of that, we actually have lowered our accounts and are going to pursue the newer technology, but, and have a couple less in our backup. Um, why, the reason this is really important is that new technology, what happens with a UPS right now is if something crashes, there's a pause. So like essentially if we have a voltage dip or anything like that, there's a pause, and you're hopeful that your stuff comes back online, but sometimes it misses. And especially in Westland right now, our infrastructure around in, in Wayne, our infrastructure is aging. Um, and so um, I'm, I'm sure some of you have experienced multi-day power outages this summer. Um, so since our inventory, since our infrastructure in this part of the state is aged, the newer technology actually runs, the batteries actually run low voltage. So it's not like it has to cut over to them, it actually is already running. So if the voltage dips or power goes out, it actually stays running. So, and then it just picks up, so you don't actually have that dip. So all of our systems that are connected to that, which are essentially our security systems, our doors, phones, et cetera, will actually stay up and running.
Do you have any questions, comments? All right.
I'll add one more thing, um, this is really important. Um, our batteries are bulging in our, these units, um, and um, that's just not safe, so.
And what's the price of that technology?
We have an updated quote with you, it's a, around two and a half million, um, you have the updated quote.
Yeah, we got it in here earlier. Here, I have that.
Oh, it's right here, two hundred fifty-four thousand, um, four hundred forty-seven and sixty cents. And that actually was an item that we had in year one of the bond, um, the bond projection.
No, I haven't, I just was. And that's a one-time payment?
That'll be a one-time, and um, your UPS will last for about five years.
And what funds is, is coming from?
This is actually coming from the Esser, um, Esser Emergency Relief Funds. Um, as I shared earlier, um, when Ms. Curry and Ms. Polikovich and Ms. Claire were, um, Ms. Claire's team were doing their final audit on those, on those monies, and they um, realized that some things had come in at less cost. Um, they had discovered a little over a million dollars, um, that was still available, that needed to be spent. And um, because Ms. May, you had asked um, me to reach out to find grant funds, Ms. Polikovich was very familiar with the tech plan, and she talked with Ms. Curry, and they decided that it would be a good use because it was purposeful, planned, um, to actually put that money to use in the Technology Department.
So I, I just want to explain my confusion, cause didn't you say two and a half million, but it's really, what did I hear? She did say two and a half million, but it's not two and a half million, it's two hundred fifty-four.
There is two and a half million in all, everything I'm presenting today, because of the E-rate monies, the Esser monies, the Gear monies.
But that wasn't the question, I'm good, we're good. But that was why I was looking confused.
Yep. Okay.
All right, any other questions? All right.
Okay, so lavalier microphone replacements, this is actually under board threshold, but I bring it just because it is part of that whole package on Esser, um, three, um, and it is a technology, so I just didn't want there to be any gray area. Um, it, as part of the twenty eighteen bond, we implemented um, uh, AV um, programming through all of our classrooms. And as part of this, it included an audio enhancement, lavalier microphone, which is um, really beneficial in um, helping to make sure that our students can um, hear. Our teachers, our, our lavaliers are actually also, are pretty nice. They actually have um, emergency buttons on them that can send a command out um, in the building if you have an emergency in your classroom. Um, I, it's a, I actually think it's a pretty nice system overall. But um, just as we've talked about how laptops in human use, um, lavalier micro, microphones are very much like that. You put one around your neck and you walk away, and maybe it doesn't come back. Or, um, or because it is around your neck and a kid grabs it, it might get broken. So this is to actually ensure that we have some replacement parts for, to keep those AV systems up and running. So we're asking for fifty complete um, lavalier microphones and batteries that would service the whole entire district, and then twenty microphone batteries. Um, the total cost of this is twelve thousand eight hundred thirteen dollars and fifty cents.
Have any questions? No? Great.
Okay, um, so the last thing here is um, access points. So as part of last year's E-rate, we went ahead and did, um, and are almost completed with our access points. Um, in doing our speed tests and our coverage tests, we found a few places where it might be nice to have a few more devices. So we have, are requesting to purchase a few additional access points. One to add a little depth to our coverage in a few schools where we have um, maybe some uh, excessive amounts of brick walls to um, get systems through, but also new construction areas that have, that are um, newly being opened to make sure that we can service those, um, and also to have just a few spares, because um, if, you know, when wifi. And also to have just a few spares because, um, if, you know, when Wi-Fi goes down, um, you don't want to take the building down for days while you wait for a part to show up. You'd like to just be able to replace it. So we're asking to spend fifty-one thousand two hundred eighty dollars and sixty-five cents on some spare parts to really, um, make sure that our Wi-Fi system does exactly what you need it to do. Especially a place I think this could really come into play is the high schools have talked about doing, um, standardized testing cathedral style. If you're not familiar with that is, that means all students are brought into like a gymnasium and they all test in one area. That was really easy when we were students and we just bubbled in with our pencils. But if you do that now with everything being tech-wise, um, all of those devices are hitting your access points. So we want to make sure that, um, if that is the wish of those, um, those secondary buildings, that we can support that.
And where would this be coming out of?
This is also from Essar. Everything is from Essar or GEAR. That was B through J. E-rate is obviously the FCC grant, um, what would require about a hundred fifty thousand dollar match. So everything here that I presented tonight, um, almost three million in technology would cost, hit, hit general funders thinking fund at a maximum of a hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Any questions?
Can you repeat that again?
Yes.
Just what you said about the general fund?
Yep, so.
A hundred and fifty thousand.
Yep. The, everything that was presented tonight is coming from grant, uh, whether it's the FCC E-rate, the GEAR two monies or the Essar three funds. So this is more than three million in technology. And actually that's at education pricing rate. If we actually went off and we're purchasing this, um, market value, we're probably looking at closer to five to six million in technology for about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Ms. May?
So, um, I have a couple of questions. The first question is around, um, so I remember last year the board signed off or voted on being able to have some, I'm gonna use the term virtual, like virtual days in the event of not necessarily replacing snow days, but just active guide days, um, things of that nature. So I'm assuming this is a part of the one-to-one, right? Where we want the, these devices so students have the devices in their hands in the event that we have to pivot to that. That's one piece, one question. The second part of that question is, do we have hotspots for students? If they don't, so that they have access?
I'm gonna defer to Ms. Curry on the virtual days because I know that there's been some changing in CIA on your perspective on how you want to approach that.
Well, not necessarily, but there's new, I'm gonna say rules, right? Around those fifteen days. Because to Ms. May's point that if we were gonna do a virtual day, right? Moving like last year, you could, um, you know, if everybody didn't have a device in their hand, you could do an alternative assignment still for them to use at home. The new guidelines are you, you have to have a virtual, you have to have a device with you at home, logging in. There's a lot more strict rules around those additional fifteen days. We would still, so I guess the short answer would be, it would be very difficult for us to use those fifteen days, right? Because truly I couldn't, you know, truly say that every single student is gonna log on at home and we're gonna use those fifteen days. With that being said, we could use them in pockets. So pre-planning testing at the high school, high school testing days. If we knew that, let's say ninth graders are gonna go online, we would have enough devices for ninth graders that day. But I truly don't foresee us using those fifteen days other outside of that maybe the testing window, based on the new guidelines.
So then to your second question, Ms. May, around hotspots. Widespread, we don't actually have a large fleet of hotspots to provide to students. However, um, Wayne Westland has used a, a program named KJIT in the past. And in KJIT, they have purchased a small bank of hotspots that have been used for like homebound. And, uh, last year we had one student request for a hotspot the entire year. So I did monitor that contract to see usage on all of those devices last year. Um, and it was very low. Only two of them had activity regularly through the entire year. Um, those were assigned to teachers at the time. And also if we do provide hotspots to, um, students, you do have to use a platform that will provide for the, um, the filtering required through SIPA and all of that. So, um, so there's, there is a challenge to, to that. And, um, and obviously the cost on top of that, um, if we, if Wayne Westland was to offer that as a service to their students. KJIT, each device is about ten dollars a month. And you, you have to do a one-year contract. So for each device, you're looking at a hundred twenty dollars there. The prices you can control a little more on and off when you're looking at maybe partnering with a T-Mobile or a Verizon. However, those prices are more, you're looking at somewhere between twenty-five and forty dollars to run a hotspot. But, um, one thing I would recommend Wayne Westland do, um, is obviously come up with, um, maybe a list of all the places in our community where, um, where, uh, infrastructure does allow free access. So like libraries, McDonald's, um, et cetera, um, community centers, um, maybe some of our churches. We could definitely partner with our organizations to figure out who might be open on a day that we're closed that, um, we'd need. And where, where, and help our, our, help our staff and our, our students get to where they need to be.
One time they were using the school buses. So how did that work? Was it like a program and it came off the buses, like a signal or something? Or how did that work with the buses when they had COVID? And the buses would go to locations and it would like shoot out the Wi-Fi? Do we, did we pay for it at the end or like, nobody knows, probably not.
Mr. Toko?
Yeah, there was a mobile hotspot in our buses that we had to purchase.
Oh, you had to purchase those?
Yeah.
They probably expired by now.
They did. Yeah. I'm just gonna, my, of course, it's gonna be very difficult moving forward, not with our district, but any district to provide the Wi-Fi and what, like Ms. Curry said, your virtual days where the kids.
Use your microphone.
Your virtual days where the kids, um, where our students, uh, during the COVID time were out. There was, we, we put a lot of funding into having those hotspots, um, and being able to provide our students with that. The cost at this point, um, I'm not sure how many other districts can be, not just us, but are gonna be able to, um, go those virtual days like Ms. Curry said. Just because of where we're at, from a financial standpoint, a lot of the companies have made it very difficult for, for us to do that.
Thank you. I just, um, I understand. I, I feel, and I just have to say this, it just feels so, I don't know the word I wanna use, that we're saying we, we're gonna spend three million dollars for technology, but then we don't necessarily have access for kids outside of school, right? It just, it doesn't feel right to me. I understand the why behind it. It's just hard to, that's a hard sell for me to say like, oh, we're gonna give you devices, but the devices are in school. Can't take, can't necessarily take the devices home because you may not have access at home. It, it, does that make sense what I'm saying? It just feels like there are barriers and we're not removing barriers for kids. And, and I understand why the barriers exist, but I just needed to say that's, I'm struggling with that right now.
I think there's some truth to that. And I think that you're gonna see, not only us, but other districts because of that, um, are not going to be able to, or let's just, I'm gonna be honest, we're probably not gonna be able to go one-to-one because it's almost gonna be to the point where it, your points are well, are validated. And I think we've had these conversations with our administrative team about what direction we're gonna go with the one-to-one in regards to the thing that we got locked into now is, uh, a lot of our textbooks and materials that we're using are located on our Chromebooks and iPads. So in school, I, I, I can't speak for the staff and you've had some input from other staff members, but I, I don't know if every teacher is using them. But I, your, all your points are valid. I don't know how long that's going to last, so. I mean, I think we have to look at that as a district moving forward. We've already had the conversations about one-to-one and where we're gonna go with it based on the financial strain that will put on a district. And your point of if the kid can't take it home and use it, which is gonna be a lot of our kids, why are we doing it? So I, I think, I don't wanna speak too much, but I think we've already had these conversations.
Right. And it's not, and please know, Mrs. Samara, I appreciate your work, Samara. I appreciate your work. This is not, my thoughts are not anything toward you. It just, I just want you to understand like the thoughts that are running through my head. And so sometimes my facial expressions show I'm thinking, so I just wanted to express what was going through my head.
Ms. May, as a fellow C in the disk profile who has a lot of logic, I also make faces. But I do understand your concerns around equity, um, and inclusion in, um, this, in, in this, in, in the question that you put here. And what, when I was thinking about that, as I brought this forward and as I put this in plan, I knew that we had enough money to stabilize inside the classrooms and create equity inside of our spaces. And I know that there is a whole second question around how do we create that equity outside of our classrooms? But with money available at this time, I thought it would be better to at least create equity in a space that is special, where our kids can come and not, and not have that barriers inside of, inside of our buildings. So that is, that was the ta, the, the, the challenge I chose to tackle. Is it the right one? That obviously is for the board to decide.
So I'm hearing that textbooks are on these devices, right? That's how kids are accessed.
Not all of them, but there is some textbooks, yeah.
Even if our textbooks aren't, they often have online learning components, extra resources, videos.
Right.
They have like, uh, most, you, most, you wouldn't buy a textbook today that didn't have a digital component. That's, that's the very real.
I understand that. I guess where I was going with that is again, so when kids have homework, they need additional support. They don't have access because those things are on the devices that they're not taking home.
And that is part of the, the middle school with the, um, the carts and the media centers is for students to, you know, those middle, those middle schools are gonna be able to navigate what they do with those devices. So they might do checkout, they can do a lot of things with those, just it may be monitor it a little closer so that we, the breakage rate at that middle school age especially is a lot lower. The high school is staying in that one-to-one. And to be honest, most of our elementary resources are used solely in the classroom. And anything that's sent home for homework, I was an elementary teacher, Ms. Curry and Mr. Dr. O'Feely, we're all elementary teachers. We didn't send homework, um, other than if it was, you know, an opportunity for them to learn and maybe engage in, um, conversations with their family and to grow that way. It was really more around social development than anything too cognitive. So I, I think that, um, the elementary, we, we don't necessarily need to have, uh, little kids taking them back and forth.
Okay. So moving forward, I just, I'm sorry, real quick, I would just like, as we're gonna vote on this in two weeks and we're gonna stand before our community, talk about the fact that this money was uncovered. We're now gonna make this decision to spend three million dollars. We need to be very clear to our community how these devices are going to be used, what supports are in place for students with these devices. It can't be a, well, maybe it'll be used like this or perhaps it'll be like this. We need to be really clear on what that plan is. And I think that needs to be presented with this purchase on, at our next board meeting. Cause three million dollars is just, that's a lot of money. And we're still talking about our budget and things that we need to do.
I do want to be clear that only one point five million is being presented at the upcoming board meeting for a vote, a little over one point five. The, the other million, the E-rate is just an informational, that's gonna go to RFP.
I got it.
Ms. Sam.
And how is our relationships, cause, uh, with like Xfinity? Cause sometimes if we can get the relationships where we can, like the community type, you know, sometimes if you're low income, you get for twenty dollars a month and get those relationships with those companies so we can give it out to the families and show them, hey, we have these resources that help you out. Cause a lot of times people don't know about that, so we can work with those partnerships. Cause a lot of times we're a huge district and we can probably work something out like, hey, um, if you can work with Wayne Westland, give us a discount with some of our families and.
We actually do have that, um, through the FRC. Ms. Fawnin, um, has a brochure that she shares frequently through that, um, page. Internet access available. It's not, it's not, um, the highest bandwidth, you're probably not, um, gaming on it too much. But, um, I believe the rate on that is twenty, twenty-three ninety-nine a month. So we do have some of those partnerships in place. I'm sure, um, that Mr. Beebe, the partnership expert, can probably really dig into some of that work.
Yeah, but the people know, a lot of times people don't know. Just like I went through it, I was a single mom, didn't have any money and my son like failed most of his classes. We didn't have internet, I couldn't afford it. Like we had the hotspots on the phone, like it was something terrible, like when we went through that. So, and luckily we were able to go to the library in Westland and use the hotspots. But that was something like, I didn't have money, you know, I was struggling. So that was really, it affected his grades when I having that internet just to do the homework, you know, during COVID.
And as you just said, a lot of our families actually do actually have, um, cell phones now with, that can convert to hotspots. So maybe it's just some, um, education on how to use your, um, especially for perhaps a family that has an unlimited plan on their phone. Maybe some education on how those can be used as hotspots. That's actually a really great idea.
Ms. Sam, any questions?
So my question is gonna go back. So my question is, what I'd heard, I guess this is what I heard, that the administration has already talk, is talking about this, being able to be a one-on-one with the students, but they don't believe that it's gonna happen. And you trying to get to buy more technology. The problem we are having is we need to be more transparent. So they believe in that we won't, we won't get there because just like other districts, that's what he said, just like other districts.
I don't wanna misspeak on this because I don't want you to.
Okay, that's why I'm trying to get some transparency.
My, my statement was more based on if you look at the, the, the purchases that, um, Ms. Samura was presenting today. A lot of the purchases were Chromebook, were carts, were for devices to be used in the classroom.
Okay.
So I don't want to fog up the, my, my statement. She, she did, her purchases are, I'm not saying, her purchases are, are, are needed in our district because we are using those, those. And I can't, like I said, some of the teachers have made other statements in regards, and I can't speak to that, but I know that our staff members are using it. But we also, um, have an issue that is bigger than just us in regards to students having access to Wi-Fi outside. So if you look at her purchases, they are for, the majority of them are for, um, are inside of our buildings.
Okay.
So that, I wanna make that very clear. Have we looked and talked about this already in regards to maybe pivoting away at the lower levels? Being one-to-one with the iPads and the Chromebooks? Yes, we have, based on the financial burden that it's going to be, um, for the district. Not that we couldn't still have the Chrome, the, the carts where teachers can utilize those in their lesson planning and use them in different times. But mo, majority of the purchases that, um, that Ms. Samura talked about today are for usage in buildings. We have, and I, I'm gonna speak, we have an issue, not just here, but throughout the country for Wi, Wi, Wi-Fi capacity for students to be able to use these devices out of the district. So that's, I wanna make sure that's clear. I never, I will never, I, I don't wanna say that what she's doing right now is, is, uh, something that we haven't supported and we support because it's gonna be inside our buildings.
And if I could add, I think we're all assuming that you, I think we have to be clear too. One-on, one-to-one could still be that we have a device for every student. I think people just wanna assume that then they're automatically going home. So that is the bigger discussion, right? So that every student does have access to technology in the district. So you could truly say, yes, we are a one-to-one district.
On-site.
But we really have to have more conversations on do these devices go home? It could still be a one-to-one district. We just are in that, I'm gonna call that middle spot right now because of the, the amount that you've seen have been broken, right? It is not, um, it is, it's not okay to send a device home with a student who doesn't have access to log in from home. So all of those things that we wanna make sure that it's, um, available in the classroom. And then the next step is now what?
And based off of the feedback from the principals and staff across the district, that's why we're getting a little bit more specific in particular with the types of devices that are being seen at each level.
Okay.
So it doesn't all look the same across the board.
Right. I just wanna make sure that we have a complete understanding and be able to be transparent. Yes.
Yes.
Cause I mean, yes, okay.
I get it, yeah.
Ms. Sam.
And even the type of assignments, like you were saying, like some don't always have to be internet stuff after school. You know what I'm saying? Like so they can be kinda conscious on how they set up the assignments. Like you said with the ones, you know, the majority of the bulk has to be done in school, but like the ones that, the homework assignment doesn't have to really be like the internet type, you know? So maybe that can be something too with the curriculum.
I think we're, you know, the way I see it is like the pendulum swings one way, right? We're doing everything on the computer. Then we come back and we're not, we have to find that balance. I think it's what it truly comes to, it's just finding that balance between the two.
Any last questions? Well, at this time I'm gonna yield the floor, I guess, to Dr., or to Mr. Beebe so that he can give some insight. so that he can give some insight into how this initiative will support him as he takes the helm moving forward.
Thank you, and thank you for your service to the district, Ms. Samura. And good luck in your new endeavor.
Uh, I'm not gonna, thank you all, thank you board. I'm not gonna belabor the time. I think Ms. Samara did an incredible job in terms of the work that she's doing. So I just wanted to thank her for her graciousness as she's taken on another position to, to continue. You okay? To take on this, this role. I, I do believe, as I have an opportunity to work with Mrs. Stone and, and Mrs. Samara, as well as Mr. DeVal, that it, it does enhance our infrastructure in regards to, to really supporting our students and, and our staff as we move forward. So I kinda wanted to take this time just to introduce myself in this role. And as this money has come to us in a short period of time, I definitely believe it is a great investment for our students, our staff, and our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Mr. Toko again.
Good evening. I have two informational, two informational bits of information for tonight for the board. Our district went out for RFP, for construction manager, for our upcoming bond on August 13th. The public bid opening was open on September 3rd. We had three companies that bid on the construction management of the next bond. McCarthy Smith provided the lowest cost for the services and the scope of work. They also provided a no cost to the district if the bond proposal failed. So that was one that, we had other, other companies that were charging us close to $50,000 even if the bond failed. Not to say that the bond will, but if that, that's insurance policy if it doesn't. The, they, they will provide assistance and preparation. They will be willing to show up to 10 informational meetings. I'm just giving you, highlighting some of the points. This contract was very huge. Or the proposal that they, that they proposed was multiple pages. I'm just gonna highlight some of the things that are in there. McCarthy and Smith has been with the district close to 30 years at this point. They will assess the, the building needs in regards to roofs, technology, and mechanicals, and assist in the preparation of the application for state approval. McCarthy Smith has been a great partner with the district, as I said. I've been with the district for five years now, but as I said, the dis, they've been with the district for 30. Being in the space, in the current district, when you've got a company that actually knows your buildings, it's, it's good. We have 20 buildings in our district. They have done multiple assessments in those 30 years on our, on our buildings, so they know what, they know the guts of the building. The, the roofs, and I, as we go into our bond, we'll be looking at the motto being more warm, safe, and dry. We want our buildings to be safe for our kids, warm in regards to the heating and cooling, and also make sure that all of our buildings have updated or new roofs on them. And that will be part of our next bond. But we would like, as I said, to push that forward at our next board meeting in regards to McCarthy Smith.
I got one question.
Any questions?
What?
Is the lifespan of a roof, I know like when we did the bond in 2018, they had, did quite a few. Did they do, I know that it's like some of the high schools, some junior highs, is it like five or six or 10 years?
A roof on a house typically 25, 30 years.
Okay.
Your flat roof, cause it's getting beat down, and depending on what materials that you're using on it, could be 15 years. You could get 20, you get 10, depending on what material that they put on it prior to this. All four roofs, and I, I don't, quote me on this, that are left that haven't been replaced in the last bond or the one before that. So we're talking about a 15-year time period where we've replaced up to 20 roofs, or 17, 18 roofs in our district.
I want to be clear about something in my own mind. And that is, once we accept an RFP bid, lowest bid, whatever, how much do we allow that company to come back to us with change orders?
Good question.
And, and things like that, and run up the score on us?
I can speak to myself and, and how the bond moving forward will be run in regards to that. I, and I'm gonna tell you, I'm not 100% sure what went on with this because I wasn't in this position a year ago, two years ago, three years ago, four years ago, when the bond started in 2018. I think a lot of the confusion with change orders, and I, I had a conversation with Dr. Weaver already, so I'm glad he's asking this question. We, and since I've been here, we've went through two CFOs. The CFO plays an important role in this space in regards to payments, change orders, and so on. How those change orders are presented have to be in a logistical pattern in regards to when you bid on a job and you come in high, it's pretty typical. In some cases, when you get asbestos, you run into different situations in buildings when you're doing construction that a change order is necessary. Now, coming into this position, we did have multiple change orders in our last bond. A lot of the change orders that came through had to do with the pricing of materials based on COVID because it started, the bond started in 2018. So a lot of those change orders, from a financial standpoint, were impacted by COVID. Now, we shouldn't be seeing all of that coming forward as we move into the next bond. I will have that conversation, I'm going to have that conversation with, with McCarthy Smith, which will be a, a very clear and concise conversation in regards to how we run the bond, who is included, when there is gonna be a change order, and why. And basically visually getting our eyes on whatever we do in that space for a change order. Because that is a great question, because you do have companies, and I can speak, because I've been in this position in another district through a bond, that will come in, and sometimes they will come in and bid a little bit lower than you see some of that stuff on the backend. We are going to, I can't, I can't promise you that we're gonna avoid that situation with anything, but we are going to work to avoid any of those situations that could occur. What I mean by that is there's gonna be more eyes on, on those types of situations and more oversight in that, in that space.
Right.
Going moving forward in this bond. And I, I can't speak, like I said, for what happened. The only thing I can speak is when you run through different CFOs, the confusion about when you pay, how you pay, and how they want you to pay. We will definitely have that process down before we start this bond. I will guarantee you that in that space.
Okay, so my follow-up, if I may, my follow-up is, so what you're saying to me in this board is that any change order, McCarthy Smith can't just say, oh, this, this needs to be, so we're just gonna do it and charge the district. Where we're going to sign off on it.
There's gonna be multiple signatures on that, and at least two people from the district that will sign off on that change order as before it, the invoice is sent and to be paid.
Okay, thank you.
And we did do that with, and I'm, I'm gonna just speak because I think McCarthy Smith needs to at least be able to be validated in this space. So in the past six months to almost a year at this point, the change orders that they, that were, that came to us were all visually checked by, by myself in regards to going back after, and it's taken a long time in regards to going back and looking at some of the, the work that was done. Cause some of the work had been done almost close to a year prior to that, and some of the confusion about how they were submitted, how the change orders were submitted and the timing of them. So what we did was went back and actually checked to validate the work had, had actually been done in that space.
I'm, I'm sorry, one more, one more. They're bidding on the project, right?
They're bidding on, yep.
Yeah, so obviously they've walked the space. They know it needs to be done. So unless they're having to cut through a wall, they didn't anticipate. I mean, my question is, why didn't they anticipate it? Why, why are they not held to, look, this is what we said we'd do it for, and if we have to eat something, we have to eat something?
Don't disagree with you. And moving forward, we will have the, the eyes, and they're gonna have to explain why there was a change order in that process.
Okay.
And I, and to come back, I really wanna make it clear that change orders are normal. There is things that happen. Say for instance, you put, you're putting a roof on a building and you, you take the plywood off and there's a ton of mold, which happens when there's a leak. And, or you end up seeing some type of asbestos when you're removing the floor. If you see any of those small tiles that we have in multiple buildings still, and on multiple buildings throughout the country still have those asbestos tiles. It's just, if they haven't been compromised, they're fine. But once they're compromised, then you have to, there's a whole process. So I 100% agree with you that there has to be a process in place so that stuff doesn't happen. And that there is multiple signatures that the work is actually being done.
Thank you, Mr. Toko, I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Uh, the second one is another informational, just informational for the board. We did speak with the, the property committee, spoke to a broker from the Jonah Group regarding our properties. And I was just gonna highlight it, and Mr. Weaver was there, Dr. Weaver was there too, so he can, if he wants to interject at any time. We agreed to have them market our properties, in particular Marshall Hoover and all of our vacant building lots at this point. They will not list for sale signs on it. They will reach out to their circle of companies, business owners, and so on that are interested in these properties. They'll limit who is able to purchase these properties, cause we don't wanna put ourselves in a worse space when we sell a property, and I've mentioned that before. They'll target groups to advertise the property for us. The big thing is there's actually no, there's absolutely no cost to the district unless the property sells. And we'll, they'll take a percentage of that sale if the property is sold. And I, we haven't done this, at least since I've been here in regards to marketing our properties. I think we need to, cause I do think we have some properties that could be visually appealing to, to people. We've had Higira come in and take a look at one of our properties. But we've, we've had ongoing meetings, I think we've had our three or four meetings where we've talked about these properties moving forward. So we can't lose on this. The biggest thing is that we can win, because if it's not costing us anything unless we sell the property. And he did talk about a range between 4% and 6% when, if, if they do assist us in selling the properties. And that's not to say that if a company approaches us during this time period, that we can't sell the properties on our own either.
Just had a question. We, we still approve though, the sale.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, so, so when they find somebody, they don't just get to sell it?
It has to come through us, it'll go through our attorneys, we have to, they have to check.
And it'll come before the board to vote on it?
We don't want a charter school, or, you know, Scott Toko Incorporated buy one of our buildings.
Which one do you want?
Yeah. Well, then sit on it for a year, and then come in and sell it to a charter school. So we have to do our vetting process before we make that decision.
So the actual sale will still come before the board?
Yep.
Okay. Any questions?
I have a question.
Ms. Abby Mitchell?
Yep.
That paper that you reading for, we didn't get a copy of that?
That's just my notes.
Oh, okay. No, usually when somebody say something, we get a copy. And so is this the person, um, let me see. We got an email from somebody talking about the property on Bayview, that, I think that's Marshall?
What was the name?
For Joseph Carson. He's a staff person, yes.
I didn't get it.
Yeah, he's a staff person, so that's not who we have marketing. He's a basketball coach.
I, no, 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 he's not. This is an actual investment.
A media teacher.
No, this is an investment broker, and he works for the Jonah Group. So it's an actual group, a broker that is doing this. We have a lot, and I'm gonna go back to this Marshall property. We have a lot of people that I, since I've been in the space, that have reached out to me. The Marshall property is, is something we really have to look at demoing. That, that property right now, everyone wants it for nothing, and the property is gonna cost someone to even human being in that building close to 25 million dollars. So the reality of that building selling is, there is no reality to it. No one's gonna come in unless they have some federal funding that they're gonna be able to dump that much money into that building. And guess what? They're not gonna do that. They're gonna build a building for 15 million or 20 million on that property. So we have, that's gonna be one, and you'll be hearing about one of our processes or one of our projects in our upcoming bond to be able to, I think that built, that property will be more appealing to builders and so on without a building on it. So I, I just wanna say that because I know that a lot of you up there right now have been approached by people regarding the Marshall property. And I want you guys to speak clearly about what that property is, if you have to, and what it entails. Cause a lot of people think that, a lot of people that have approached me, at least the majority have, have made statements that that building is turned to you. You just open it up and you're gonna put people in there, and that's not the truth.
And you said that was the Jon, Jonah Group?
Jonah, J-O-N-N-A.
And there's.
And also, you said that we don't pay anything unless the property sell.
Correct.
And what is the percentage of that?
Anywhere between 4% and 6%.
4% and 6%.
Yes.
Okay.
And we don't necessarily have to sell the property through them. If someone approached us, we don't have to either. But if they are the ones that approach you.
Somebody approached them, I understand.
Just like if you were selling your house.
I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there's one more group I reached out to, Galvin and Associates. So they're actually doing a lot of reconstruction over in the Inkster Housing project. So the guy, he was appointed by like three different presidents, and he's got all those like HUD approvals. And they actually built the houses and stuff like that, so I wanna get those conversations going. Cause he said he'd be open to talk to Wayne Wesley, cause they're actually doing the park side estates, and then they're doing Denby, so they're redeveloping the whole area down, in that Inkster area. And it's, you know, we're right next door, and they can help us with, you know, build another house when we sell the land and things of that nature.
You can have them reach out to me, you're the one who put us in contact with.
Colliers, yeah.
So yeah, just have them reach out, we'll see where it goes.
Yeah, cause that'd be helpful. That way we have like the plan demolish, build houses.
We're willing to listen to anyone right now, because that property, if we can get some money for any of our properties, then that's what we wanna do.
Anything else? Okay, on to the next, that was your second item, so the next is a budget update from Ms. Claire. Thank you for joining us.
So for the budget update, I provided a memo basically summarizing the 23, 24 year, as I see it, that we're gonna come in with approximately 22.8 million increase to fund balance. And our fund balance will be at 32.1 million after that. So, and the reason this is so positive is because we moved salaries to SRR after last year's, you know, situation. I'm sorry.
We, not me, but the, the staff decided that that was a strategic move, and it was a very good one. And it did bear fruit. But I just wanna make sure that you understand that this is a one-time, okay? That, that'll never happen again. We'll never have a SRR 3 where we can pretty much do what we want with. So this is a, a good thing. It kinda wipes out what happened last year, puts us even better place than we were before last year. But we still have to remember that those 20 million of salaries have to come back to general fund this year. So it's good, but then it's, we still have to be cautious, diligent, making sure our staffing levels are correct, and that we're just, just really looking at our purchases. I will be doing another budget for 24, 25, cause obviously things aren't the way that we thought. That will be presented at the October meeting. You will also see the audited financial statements at that time. I don't expect them to be any different than what I've just told you. And the 30 million dollars that we borrowed, we have to keep it for the year. We can't just give it right back. So we will have that for the year, but they're gonna be putting it, we talked to the state, they're gonna put it in a escrow account with PFM. So there will be no. So, there will be no interest cost on it, because we will have the interest income to offset that, that interest expense. Um, that's about it, any questions?
Uh, you go with yours first.
So, mine is not really, it's not necessarily a question, but I would just like to, it's not really a question, but I would just like to ask that you introduce yourself, just because if people watch this and they don't know
Okay, yes.
who you are and what it was, so, just.
You don't know me.
Yeah.
Uh, my name is Jewel Claire, I worked at Rain Risa for nineteen years and, uh, retired, and I've been in, going around helping school districts, uh, at year end or at bad times, or filling in when they have an opening. So, that's what I do, I came here last year when there was a opening, and I had to bear the bad news. So, I'm kinda happy that I wasn't bringing that kinda news again. Um, and that's about it for me, um, I am filling in right now until you, you find a younger person. And, with a lot of energy. And, um, yep, so, that's about it, unless you have any questions.
Uh, Dr. Weaver, that was assigned.
Uh, first of all, thank you for all the work you're doing. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought we borrowed forty million?
No.
Thirty-four, isn't it?
No, it was, uh, it was gonna be forty million, and then it got put back down to thirty million.
Okay, thank you, so it was forty million.
Ms. Abby Mitchell?
I also would like to say thank you, Jewel, for the work that you're doing, but I have a question. So, my question is, so, our, so, our funding, our fund balance increased because of one-time ESSER funds that we are able to use. So, where was the ESSER for, for, for forms, funds at?
Actually, could, and I think I'm gonna help with that, can you just kind of, you don't have to go through every single detail, but can you go through what happened, like, when you first came in a little bit?
Last year?
Yeah, no, no, no.
No?
Well, the su- the summer, what, can you kinda go through everybody, cuz we have an al- not everybody was in the, has been in meetings with you about it, so.
Real quick, I, I, I think it would be beneficial if she went back from last summer to this summer, just because people have been asking and asking.
I think that'll answer Ms. Abby Mitchell's question as well as anybody that's in the room or watches this later.
So, um, last year, we, um, we had budgeted to lose eight million, cuz our fund balance was, you know, twenty, I, I'm gonna say twenty-six million, was pretty hefty. We wanted to make conscious decision and approved a budget for an eight million dollar loss to get that. But when I came in, I found that so- something hadn't been booked, which was over eight million dollars right there, so that put us at sixteen. Then, there was a special ed, kind of a funding that changed that had happened that we hadn't, uh, appropriately accounted for, so that was like three point three. So, um, and then we budgeted that eight point four million dollars of revenue for this, this next year, when it was a one-time. So, um, that's what I found last year, and I had to tell a Dr. Dignan and was very upset, sick about it myself, to tell him, you know? But, it was what it was, but the good thing was, he got everybody together in, in the room, and we started, what can we do, what can we do? And the, we had ESSER funds, and we had put other things in ESSER, software, other purchases. And we said, get all that out, and let's put salaries in there. And what that does is, it takes them out of general fund, and they go, you're, you know, being reimbursed for basic salaries, and it goes to your, your bottom line, and it goes into your fund balance, and a lot of districts have done this. Um, some of them didn't, and that's why they're in a bad place now, they've over hired new people, I'm sorry, they hired new people, that now they have to worry about, what am I gonna do with these people? We took our current staff, teachers, moved them over there, it was a very strategic, very smart move. So, that just came right down to our fund balance. But again, that's one time, you're never gonna happen again, we're never gonna have that twenty million dollars to do that with. So, it was very smart. So, it worked. This year, when I came in, I was asked to come in again and help with the audit. And the first thing I did was I looked at, you know, I do my little thing, and I looked, and I said, wait a minute, something's wrong, I'm seeing a gain here. But when I've been watching the meetings, I've been hearing that it was gonna be a loss, and the situation was not, not the same. So, I thought it was wrong, software's wrong, I get out, come back in, I'm like, no, it's not, it's, it's, we, we did, we did, and I thought, well, really, what, that's should've been what had happened, because of the twenty million of ESSER, this is what should've happened, this was, should've been expected. And so, I had to go tell, uh, Jen again, but this time, I was still worried that they, she, they might not like it, but I had, and then she was okay with it, she said, good. That's good, you know, some people might be upset, but we can move forward, you know, it's all we can do is move forward from where we're at, and at least where we're at is in a better place. Um, but going forward, I don't have a, you know, a budget for you yet, I can't say, you know, what's gonna happen this year. Um, I had to do a, a cash flow for the, um, state of Michigan to show us, show them that we are not in a deficit. We're fine, that we can get out of this, uh, deficit in elimination, we don't need to do that, and then, um, all we have to do is just put that money in. Uh, they'll make the payments for us, they'll manage that thirty million for us. And, um, we'll do a new budget, look at, see how, how we're doing. I'm anticipating it's close to break even, or a little bit of gain, a little bit of loss, just by what I'm looking at when I was doing the cash flow, cuz the twenty million, cuz if you think about it, we made twenty-two million. Um, if we didn't have those, um, we would've been making like two, or, you know, point eight, or, you know, close to, we still wouldn't have been in a huge deficit, even without the twenty million, we would, and then that's with the three million that we had to give, you know, take a hit this year, we took that hit with that, uh, property tax debacle, so it would've been three million more than that. So, um, I'm a, I'm just anticipating that we're gonna be close to break even this next year, but I'm gonna do a full deep dive into the budget, and you'll get that at the October meeting, and also see the audited statements.
And so, just to clarify, so, just in case there's any confusion around, so what happened is, all the changes were made to take, put that money into ESSER last year, but the budget that we were presented in June did not reflect that. It reflected, and correct me if I'm wrong, it basically had those salaries coming out of ESSER and also coming out of the general fund.
That's right.
So, it was, on paper, it was like we were spending the money twice. So, Ms. Claire found that, and so our budget from the end of last year was wrong by about twenty-two million dollars.
Well, I just wanna say thank you, I, we appreciate you, and I do have another question. So, you, the money that you filed in ESSER, you seen, it was on paper, have you seen the money?
Yes, if you look at.
No, I'm talking about the cash money.
Yes, yes.
That's what you, you said, was that that was one way you knew something was wrong, because you saw the money.
If you look at the investment report,
Yeah.
we have tw- we have, well, right now, we have really a lot of money, cuz we've got the thirty million in there, but even, even, um, you know, last month, we had twenty-six million dollars in there, we were never in a, in a situation where we were not gonna make payroll. General fund had twenty-six million, the other funds have, uh, money too, but we were never in a situation where we were gonna make our, our payroll or anything like that, we were fine. Um, so, uh, yes, we got the money from ESSER.
I'm just wanna know who seen the money, seen it personally, anybody?
Well, the bank statements are attached here to my, to my, um, one of my next items, and you can see,
Yeah, alright.
you would not have twenty-six million dollars in your bank account.
Who didn't touch the money?
I, I didn't roll around in it or anything like that, I wanted to. Jen said, no. No, it is.
We appreciate you.
It's on the statement, we do have the cash.
Okay.
We've been reimbursed from ESSER, you can go on that ESSER, uh, the dashboard and see that we've gotten the money, and, and we used it in a, in a very strategic way, and it worked out. But, um, I keep using Hail Mary. It's a Hail Mary, it's a one-time, and it's got us in a good place now, but we, going forward, we gotta be diligent and make, you know, we can't just go out and woo-hoo, you know, party. We got us, we got to still be really, you know, cognizant of, we don't wanna go back to where we were.
Right.
Ms. Heinz and Ms. May?
And I just wanted to give you an air hug, that's like the best, like, information that we've gotten, like you said, it's a Hail Mary, it's a relief, and it can really just, we're moving forward, so I really, really appreciate all your work that you guys, and everybody together, working even with the Mr. Markey and the staff, and Mr. O'Philly and Jen, so again, I'm giving you an air hug, cuz that was like the best information to even get.
Well, and it was the people in that room, you, Jen, there was a whole group of people in that room that, you know, um, uh, I have to call her Ms. P. because it's too big. She was in there, you know, with the grants, saying, okay, we can do this, and it was a strategic move that, you know, they made, it was very smart, it worked out, it worked out, and, uh, it wasn't me.
But it was your twenty-twenty vision that, that seen that.
Yeah, but you would've, you would've seen it sooner or later, so I don't wanna take, you would've seen it at the audit, but you would've been, wait a minute, you know, you're finding out earlier than, so you won't look surprised, you know?
That's very good news, we just have to stay transparent and, and, and work together, and work together.
Thank you, so again, thank you, and thank you for introducing yourself, I just wanted people to know who you were and, and your, um, your background, because all of that plays a part in the work that you've been doing, so thank you so much. Um, my question is more so for, um, Jen, so, it was mentioned that we had some things initially that we were planning to use for ESSER, then we put those things to the size, we put those salaries in, but then we found, were able to recap the one point five million, so did we go back to those things, or did we just go to the technology, and if it was, and, did we not go back to those things because of the timing, like, I'm just curious?
So, and I'll have Mr. Toko add too, we had a lot of things originally, um, to do with, um, we relieved, so from the bond work, we also had some things within ESSER, so that is part of the things that we took out of ESSER then, and then they put into the bond, if you wanna speak to that a little bit.
Some of the projects, uh, Ms. May, that we're going to have to put into the next bond were pivoted when we got the ESSER funds, cuz most districts, including Canton, they moved a lot of, some of their, their projects, because you could use it, it was money that was there, and you, we were gonna supplement the bond money, um, with the ESSER funds to put the remaining roofs that we didn't put on our buildings, we were also gonna pay for the remaining buildings that did not receive air conditioning in our buildings, so there was a bunch of projects that were in that twenty million, um, the majority of them were in, um, operations, which were buildings of ground, cuz that was a safe, logical, uh, fiscally responsible area to put them at the time, because you're, you're investing in your buildings and not, uh, and I, someone made the statement about, um, staffing, a lot of districts put these ESSER money in staffing, so now they're, if you look, they're laying, having to lay all these people off because they don't have that funding. Uh, we didn't, we, uh, obviously, at, at, when we found out about the situation, we had to put it, and that's why we have to be very careful moving forward, but we did put a lot, a lot of the stuff you're gonna see, the front end of the bond, uh, the new bond, um, will be a lot of those projects that we took, that twenty, twenty million dollars, and put it back to put us in a better place.
And I think we put about three, about three hundred and eighty-three thousand in indirect costs as well, is that about this, like, I think that's about the exact amount too, from the ESSER fund, we were able to put some in a indirect cost bucket, so it's, it'd be unforeseen expenses.
So, we're not, so when we, like, the money that we're using on technology, right, that we were able to recoup or discover it, right? We, there wasn't anything else that we put to the side that we didn't get, because we took that ESSER money to do salaries, does that make sense what I'm asking? So, just the bond projects?
The bond, the projects that were outside of the bond that we were gonna supplement the bond with, um, that's what, we were gonna put that in there, so no, there isn't anything that I can speak to.
So, as Kim P. then, we kind of fine, literally fine tuned all of that ESSER three, right, with then, including like, I think it's three hundred and eighty-three thousand in indirect costs, that's what was left, right, and as you know, we gotta spend it by September thirtieth. So, it was like, okay, and we knew the needs of the technology department, moving forward, what's gonna get us to the bond, get technology in, in the classrooms as well, and that's how that thought process came within the last couple of weeks.
Okay.
Yeah, and it truly, um, which I think, you know, Jacinda is spot on when she had said, I think it was just not necessarily described, um, as clearly, last-minute funds, it's really not last-minute funds, it's ESSER's closing out, right, we're closing up our books, we wanna spend that money completely. Um, and, and completely, and what would be best for kids even a couple of years down the road, that all kids can have access to. I mean, that's the way I would describe it, how it, thought it just came out a little differently.
Kids now, um, that, and I think that's what, what, um, we, the, the logic behind those ESSER funds were, to do that now, so that technology, um, in me, we decided that's where we wanted it, that was the space they wanted.
Cuz the other caveat, if you don't, if you don't spend it, we had till September thirtieth to spend it, so it's kind of, then you gotta quickly come up with another idea.
I want to add another point of clarification around technology, there was a statement that was made from, uh, Jacinda, she was doing a presentation around, uh, possibly taking work from BOSS and working with, uh, BOSS around, there is no work that's being taken from BOSS, but the, what, what she was trying to articulate, some of the items that we'd be selling back are items that we no longer need. So, it's not work, uh, to repair, uh, devices that need repair, these are devices that we're getting rid of. So, I'd sort of be very clear and put that on the record, that there's no work that we're taking out of one group.
There's information too, that I just wanna piggyback on, uh, what Dr. O'Philly said, the position that they're speaking about in, in BOSS was a very, um, productive position probably six or seven, eight years ago, but it was focused in on the technology that was within the district at that time, which we didn't have, we probably had not even a third, I'd even say less than that of the technology, when I talk about computers and, and Chromebooks and, and iPads. Uh, the position was focused in on fixing the overheads, uh, the, um, whiteboards, stuff like that. And then what happened, when COVID came, the position became a position where we had one person that was, is responsible for fixing all the damaged Chromebooks, that is physically impossible. So, I want that to be part of your thought process, because Ms. May said something about making a decision, they don't wanna make a decision on a BOSS position. That position right now is something that has to, that's why I wanna bring this up, it's, I'm not just wanna talk, I just want you guys to have a a clear vision of what that position actually is, uh, that it was something that was very productive at one point before technology, before our district went one-to-one with nine to ten thousand, uh, devices, and you got one individual, he could handle what was going on in the district before COVID and before we went one-to-one, but when you get that position, that's why it's still unfilled. It's a position that logically, if you look at the way it's posted, there's no possible way that you, we got twenty-five hundred, three thousand devices, and you're gonna expect one human being to fix that, it's just, we've already started outsourcing, although, we had to, uh, during COVID, to, to make sure we had enough, uh, devices for the kids to use at that time, cuz there's no possible way that one individual could do that job. And I think that had to be stated, I wanted to do it before, but I think it was a perfect time when, uh, Dr. O'Philly said it, cuz you need to understand what that position actually is, and what it was at one point.
Any other questions, Bob?
And I wanna make sure, uh, Dr. O'Philly was part of that too, there was a lot of people in the room, but I forgot to give him credit, he was, he was involved in, uh, making those decisions also, in picking the people and all the hassles that, that had, it took to do all that. Um, I also provided the, under Business Office Reports, the State Aid Status Report, and the State Aid Update, which is, um,
Jewel, real quick, so this State Aid Report includes the increases from the budget that was approved, right, so like, how we were gonna get an increase in thirty-one A money?
No, that will be on our, uh, I mean, uh, October or November. Uh, this is the last one of fiscal twenty-three, twenty-four. And as you see on the back pages where they took back the three million, um, then they gave us back like one point four million, we, but we booked the whole three million, because we overstated our revenue those previous years. The other, that's just paying back the three million, but, so we took a hit, uh, for that, and, uh, that won't happen next year, so that's three million more that's gonna be in next year's, um, and.
This is the three million from the taxes?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're not gonna do the.
Right, that was all, we took the whole in the one year.
Okay.
We're making, they're gonna deduct from our state aid, but the revenue part of it, we already booked it all in one year, we just have payable set up to make those payments back.
Yeah, okay.
Um, and also, we're going to. And also, we're going to be getting, uh, five point seven five percent ORS, uh, reduction. They're going to give it to us on our state aid. It's not really a reduction. It's going to come as a revenue and, uh, more thirty-one A money and a lot more flexibility in how you can use, uh, your thirty-one A. But, uh, no increase in, uh, per, yeah, per pupil funding, but the pupils are hopefully going up our count. So that will help too. I also provided an investment report. And as you can see, it's got some really nice balances on there. And that's because, well, it was nice before. Actually, if you look at last month, it was nice. But now it's even got that thirty million, which will be going out of our account into a, a Nescrow account with PFM. Hopefully after we talk to the state tomorrow. And if they like my cash flow, then, then we can, we can do that part, that next step with that. And then I provided, oh, any questions about the investment report? And then, um, I provided a check register with a total of all the funds that were paid twelve million point one. And that's all I have unless you have any more questions.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is citizens comments on non-agenda items. Uh, one fifty-nine point two five. I mean, you could make comment now. Sure, go for it. Oh, no, that's fine. That's fine. Yeah, you gotta go, you gotta go to the microphone, tell us who you are. We can hear you, but yeah, the recording can't. You gotta tell us who you are.
I'm Kathy Stone. Um, I'm the technology secretary. I've been there since two thousand and three. I just wanted everybody to realize how much work went into trying to choose the right things. Like I said, I've been in the technology department a long time and there have been years where we didn't have the money to, so we had to work on things like buying refurbished things to get by. So I just want everybody to realize how hard they went through and what a great place this will actually put us in for the students, for the teachers. It will be really, really good. So that was all. I just wanted you to be aware of that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Oh, no, you don't have to. You just kind of looked like you had something to say.
Kevin Markey, John Glenn High School, Spanish teacher. I, I, I was encouraged by want to see that we're, we're spending money out of sinking fund as opposed to general fund. I, I hope that, um, when we have these grants, um, that we don't go ahead and start purchasing new things. If these grants can be used to keep our costs, our current costs down, I would like to see that as opposed to looking for the next best thing to bring in. And, and then we keep going around and nobody gets to use it, you know, for a long period of time. Let's see. Yeah, you mentioned, uh, a few things about the, the Essar funds. And, um, I wanted to also say, um, as Ms. Claire is talking about doing the budget for next year, that she's looking to get it at break even. And when that occurs, and I know you're still, I know the administration is still making cuts. And so as we do that, that break even becomes, uh, savings. And that way, the general fund will stay as it is. And we're not spending that twenty-two million dollars that we, we get brought down from Essar. So we'll be able to keep our balance and then, you know, get those, um, new contracts. Yeah, so I, I think that's, uh, pretty good for now. And we're, we're going to continue in negotiations. And hopefully we can, with, uh, with this increase in our general fund. Because actually, by getting that Essar money in that we talked about, about this time last year, uh, doing that, we have brought ourselves into a higher fund balance than we had before. And with, uh, a new, uh, budget that breaks even or better as the, um, cuts take, uh, take place, we are in the, the position that we wanted to see us, you know, a year ago. So appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. No further public comments. The next item is one sixty point two five, acting superintendent's report comments.
I just want to say thank you to Ms. Claire. We are very, very grateful that you are here and, um, appreciate all of your help and look forward to continuing to work with you.
Next item is one sixty-one point two five, review and recommendations, Board of Education. Ms. Abby Mitchell?
I have nothing tonight. It's a lot of information that was presented and, you know, um, we just thank you. We thank the whole administration staff and, um, I just want to see the money. Show me the green. Show me something green. So we can have a state of relief for our community, our students and our teachers, most definitely.
Thank you.
Ms. May?
Again, just again, saying thank you to Mrs. Claire and to the entire administrative team along with, um, Mrs. Samara and Mr. Beebe for their presentation tonight, Mrs. Stone for being here. And just understanding that, um, again, the questions that I ask, I just want us to make sure that we're clear on the things that we present. And it's not just thinking about within this, within the team of aid or within the team of aid and cabinet, but thinking about our community and making sure that they understand why we make the decisions that we make and where funds are coming from and why we pivoted from one way to another way. Because again, we have to tell our story. And when we don't tell our story, our story is told for us. And so that's why I ask a lot of the questions that I ask. So again, I just want to say thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you. Ms. Heinz?
I would just like to say, I'm ready for football. So it's really exciting, the new year. I'm definitely looking forward to visiting some of the buildings, you know, really reintroducing myself to some of the staff because it's been a while since I've visited, you know, so I'm excited about that. And I'm excited to say that, um, so the Wayne Westland Kwanis is official. We are chartered. So we have plans on trying to work with John Glenn, some of the schools, the key clubs to help the kids with the literacy program. So, uh, we meet at the Westland Library at three fifteen on the second Tuesday and the fourth Tuesday of the month. So I'm really excited about getting that program in the schools.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I have, uh, several things, but I'm going to hold off on some of them because of the lateness of the hour. But I do want to echo, uh, and, and thank, uh, Ms. Claire for working in our business, uh, department. One thing you said in your memo, I think we have to keep our eyes on the ball, is that we need to be diligent about rightsizing the district. Uh, I thought that was, uh, an excellent statement. And, uh, I believe the board needs to be, uh, committed to the rightsizing of the district. Also, it's time to start talking, uh, about our sinking fund that is coming up in November. I want anyone that might be watching us, uh, by Facebook or YouTube or whatever we're on, that, um, that this is going to be no additional cost, uh, to the public. So please vote yes. In nineteen ninety-eight, the community said to us, when our buildings were in terrible disrepair, our, uh, community said to us, we don't want our buildings to get in this kind of shape again. And, uh, the community has been so gracious in passing bonds and sinking funds. And I can honestly say that our buildings are in better shape today than they have been in a long time. And so everyone that might be watching, uh, just want to remind you that sinking fund is coming up in November. Please vote yes. Thank you.
So I'm just going to clarify some of what was discussed tonight here towards the end. So like I said before, the situation we find ourselves in is that, uh, money was put into Essar last year. On paper, we were presented with a budget that had that money coming out of Essar and the general fund, which had us adopt a budget that was considerably lower than, um, was the reality that we find ourselves in. We do not, we will not have a deficit budget when you, when you're finished with the amended budget. So we did not need to adopt a deficit budget. We did not need to adopt a deficit of budget, um, def- a, uh, deficit plan. We also did not need to take the loan we took out. However, it is being reinvested so that the interest should, that we gain on that should offset, offset the interest we pay on it. Now, this is twice, Ms. Claire, that you've came in and found mistakes that were made by others that were not mistakes you made. So, uh, are you sure you want to be retired? But we'll have more to say about this, I'm sure, at the next meeting in a couple of weeks. I'm sure there'll be a lot of questions from the community in the couple of weeks when we have that meeting. But I do want to thank Ms. Curry for, uh, the willingness to have somebody take a second look. That is something the board has asked her for a long time is that we had questions about this and we wanted a second look taken. And when that was done, look what we found. And I want to thank everybody for being here tonight and putting in the work that you all have put in this year and all these extra meetings. And, uh, for the community members that are here. With that, I'll move on to the next item of business, which is one sixty-two point two five, adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn? All right, all in favor?